A reminder of the city council, the City of Pierceville, Texas will be held on Tuesday, 3/11/2014 at 7:01 PM at the Pierceville City Hall, 215 South Ash Street, Pierceville, Texas. Councilman Mascares, we have Maggie Ariza, Councilman Conrad Osco, Mayor Pocatello Trevino, Councilman Ego Nieto, Councilman Alex Hernandez, Councilwoman Odilia Verial, and for the record, Erica Gomeda, not here. Okay? And for the allocation of special agents.
Good Lord, we thank you this evening for the opportunity to come together and reinforce this meeting. We pray, Lord God, for your blessing upon our city council and administrative staff and all the employees here with the city, and thank you for all your blessings upon the city of Pierceville. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as for all.
Do you have any citizens to be heard? 39 minutes. The approved regular city council minutes of January 14th, 2014, be approved in the special city council meeting of January 30th, 2014.
Can I comment on those?
Yes.
On the, on the third, I think it's on the 30th, the minutes of the 30th, there's a correction to be made on those minutes she put in that were, do we correct them?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. So you're using the corrected minutes?
The corrected minutes.
Not the ones that are not corrected?
One second.
Yeah.
The correction has been made there because she had seven members voting and there were
only six, so. But she made the correction on the one you have on there. Table.
Just a little table. But it's under the E.
You want to have a vote? I have to weigh the phone with the minutes. So generally, if you can refer to action, actions without the last two hours.
You have a second by Councilman Maggie Ariza, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yes. We're going to go to executive session. According to the Texas Governor's Code, Chapter 551, Chapter D, Section 551, the ZO71, may discuss and consider ending or contemplated litigation Tobias versus the City of Pierceville in the 218 District Court, Rio County, Texas, called number 13-1-00414-CVF. Mr. Trevino?
We got to go to executive session.
The ground motion?
Move ahead. Move ahead and do both of them.
Okay. Okay. We go into executive session at 7:07. No action taken. We finish. Yeah, I'm waiting for that. Okay, we are back in from executive session. We finished executive session at 8:00. 8:00, no, 8:18. Okay. Next item, 7:0 business, A, discuss and consider resolution number 2014-01-09 to approve a request from the Pierceville Little League for the city to pay for the bands and any other entertainment costs to be incurred during the first annual Little League fundraising extravaganza on March 29th, 2014. This was previously a tabled item, action item.
You guys tabled this item last meeting and so here it is back again.
Do you have a motion to table this?
And I think the reason you tabled it was...
He just, a motion to untable.
Okay, you gotta make a motion to untable.
Yes. Councilman Nieto made a motion to untable. Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Maggie Ariza? Okay, go ahead, question.
This is an item that you brought up last week and was tabled. Mr. Councilman Hernandez wanted to get a clear explanation from the city attorney. He wasn't here last week.
Do you want to take a vote on that?
I'll take a vote.
Did you vote?
I wouldn't take it. They wouldn't get a second. I'm voting second. Take a vote.
Oh, okay. Let me have a second. All in favor? All against? Motion passed. New business, discuss and consider resolution number 2014-02-02 to approve the request from the American Cancer Society Relay for Life to temporarily use the city's golf carts during its annual event.
This is a, this is a request that was made by the Relay for Life Rocky, that's the paper. And at first I told her I wouldn't put it in the agenda, that I would probably do it. Then I thought about it, said, no, I better not be doing things like that. I need you guys to approve it.
How many cars are we talking about?
They're looking at maybe two cars. We got three or four cars, but only two have worked. I told her that.
Maybe all working.
But then she called me back and told me that it's really not gonna be, you know how they have it over there, they start in the evening and it's all night and then the morning? She said they're only gonna use them for the disabled people and it's gonna be like two hours.
I also could tell her I was looking some, Rudy Rodriguez has some really nice ones that we're gonna take as well.
Oh, that's good. So, you know, again, it's up to you.
I'd like to go and approve what Rudy Juan.
Okay, we got the motion to approve the request from the American, to approve the city golf carts for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, and second by Councilwoman Maggie Ariza, all in favor? All against? Motion passes.
One last comment on that. You told me you had budgeted the amount for new carts and then this kind of thing, and we looked it up and there's about $3,600 next. That might buy one cart, not new.
But it says use.
Use.
So then we can buy two.
The ones we bought here were about a little, about $1,200 to use, because a new one will cost you $2,800.
But I never budgeting for that.
We got the money in there. So we're gonna look at buying one or two.
Could we try to buy them before?
Huh?
So we can have them for the Relay for Life?
Well, we'll look tomorrow. We're not gonna go to San Antonio, sometime this week, I'll go look at it.
Okay. All right, thank you. And new business, C, discuss and consider resolution number 2014-02-03 to amend the City of Pierceville's personal manual by adding a job description for a records management officer, to amend the current budget to accommodate this position, and to authorize the city manager to advertise and, if applicable, hire the position. Action item. Mr. Trevino?
Yes, and he was showing me the charter where the city clerk is, but the duties of the city clerk include records management, things like that. One of the worst things we have in the city, not just this administration, but I don't know how many years, is records management. We have tons of records that need to be discarded or sorted, I mean, before it being discarded. In fact, there's a state law regarding records management and retention. And city clerks never really had time to allocate to it. We've got files, not only is this saved, they need to get discarded somehow and some retained, but we got, in my office, you saw what they did, they put all those boxes in there, whoever boxed them, I think the previous city manager. Nobody's wanting to go, we need to go to those. Over in the old building, over in the old city hall, if you go to the second floor up there, we got half a building there of files. They need to be, not just discarded indiscriminately, we have to go through them and somebody has to spend a lot of time doing that. So it's a full-time position. And I looked at other cities that have records management, they have a person full-time doing that. And even a staff, in the bigger cities like San Antonio, probably has a whole staff of people that do that, you know? So, you know, I wanted to address this, one of these problems that we've had here for a long time and get it underway so that, you know, we start facing the city regarding that. And I created the position so that you can, in a way, you've already kind of approved the box. When I gave you the chart, organizational chart, you'll see on there that I had the city clerk there, and then I had HR under there, and Kurt, the records manager. Again, those two duties are wrapped up in the, in the city clerk department, created by the charter. Well, what happens there is that the previous city manager, I don't know which one it was, hired and created a position called Human Resources, but it was never created in the charter for Human Resources, you know? And they made them, not quite a department head, because I don't think they ever decided it was a department head, but the stater occupied it, you know, they hired the stater to do that, and then after that, the proust was in there. So when I came aboard, I said, where is it in, where is it in our organizational charter? Or have they created a job description for it? Nope. And I said, well, you can't willy-nilly do that because the charter tells you that if you're gonna add additional departments, you gotta bring them before the council, bring a job description of where they fit and a salary range, all of that before you can add them.
It was a budgeted item on that, in our position, and this one here, I don't think it couldn't budget.
But I'm asking for a budget. I'm asking for a budget here.
Do we have money to pay?
Well, Mr. Robertis can answer that, and where that money's coming from.
Well, actually, the amount that was budgeted for the previous...
City clerk.
City clerk was $54,000. And so for the rest of the year, I remember, I gave you the figures.
We're not gonna budget it.
What?
This year.
No, this year.
No, because Amy quit in June or July.
Well, but for the year, it was budgeted.
Okay.
And so what we're gonna pay Amy leaves...
$23,000, and the short period that we're gonna hire this on this year is only 18, so it's gonna cover it within that, that position.
Because our city clerk is not getting what we budgeted for, so we could remove that.
Yeah, it covers her too, because, you know, she also had some savings for, I mean, we had savings during the time that she wasn't hired here, which has been, what, six months almost? Is this in the budget year here?
Well, that's whatever Rudy was getting paid. But there's still, how much left over after that?
No, Rudy, Rudy is not in that position.
He was, he was getting paid for acting city clerk.
Oh, yeah, but it was only...
He was getting a stipend.
It was only $800, so...
But it came out of that budget, right?
Well, it hasn't, but it can, but it doesn't accumulate to very much in four months. So there is money that was budgeted for the city clerk that will be left over that we can fund this position, without having to increase the budget in total.
I'm gonna go ahead and approve this resolution.
Second? Yeah, motion made by Councilman Osco, which you approved. Resolution number 2014-02-03, second by Mayor Pocatello Trevino, all in favor? All against? Motion passes. New business, D, discuss and consider resolution number 2014-02-04 to authorize and direct the city manager to advertise and obtain bids for roof, structural, or other necessary repairs to the old city hall buildings located at 213 South Oak Street. Action item, I thought we already...
Did what? No.
No, we gave it permission.
Yeah. That's not what I meant here. Not for that building. I'm talking, I'm talking about the old city hall. As you know, it has a flat roof and it's been repaired probably, how many times? 15 times? I don't know how many times. And it leaks, and it continues to leak, and whatever repairs we've made over time, they leak. We need a roof there like, like the brush country has and like the paisano has where it's a false roof on top of it that will rain and stop this problem about leaking into the building. And then we gotta do some repairs inside the building, but we need at least to stop the rain. I wanna fix the building inside, but we don't wanna do that until we fix the roof issue. And there's any structural issues, I don't think there's any structural issues with the building itself, it's a pretty sturdy building, but the roof is a problem.
Is this building insured?
Yes, but...
Would this be from insurance money or...
No, no, that's why I brought it to you, because it's not part of the insurance, because the roof there didn't get damaged.
It was already damaged.
It was already damaged. I mean, it's been damaged for a long time.
It's gotta be damaged by now.
Well, and I went, eventually, once we get a repair, it's to move the judge there, to that building, and have the court in that building.
It used to be in that building?
Yes, it used to be in that building. And that would also, you know, there are two titles there at the, at the library, and he would like to move there, but I said, we need to repair before we come up with that. And that would free up the library too, you know, we need to free up that library, you know, we need, we have, we need, have need for that, for those two offices. But...
Make a motion.
To approve?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion made to approve resolution number 2014-02-04, motion made by Mayor Pocatello Trevino, second by Councilman Conrad Osco, all in favor? All against? Motion passes. Nine briefings, city manager briefing to the city council, one properties cleanup, Madonala and Trevino Properties.
And you know these properties were here, we clean up, and the Trevino property I'm talking about is the...
Confirm that, please.
We're all Trevinos, but it's a...
Not ours, Trevinos.
Hector, Hector's place called Tater Bar. So anyways, they had come before you guys before, and they asked for the cleanup of those private properties. I disagreed, it's kind of, you know, you passed it, so we had to carry out what you wanted to do. I allowed them to sign the papers or the waivers and the things that the city manager, the city attorney had said. So we finally went out there and took the bulldozer and cleaned those. What I wanted to do is for you to know what it costs us. The one that I put in your binder there was $3,999. $4,000 for the Madonala property, and the Trevino property costs $2797. So we paid close to $6,000 there for cleaning.
For the record, I was against that.
But they were willing to pay that, weren't they?
No.
And I thought that we should at least file a lien, we should have filed a lien on the property.
The city waived all that.
Yeah, you guys...
No cost, no lien.
There's not, there's not worse than the street, so let's go on.
Yeah. That's all I have now. Oh, oh, before you, you might have noticed in that part in the agenda, but you saw that I gave you some things on the Law Enforcement Center, you know, just an idea about the plaque that they're gonna put there, and when they're planning to have the dedication for the...
The dedication will be March 14th?
I think I got it 14th, right? Yes, Friday. And, you know, I'm working with the chief to try to develop some kind of a dedication for it.
Oh, we have to change that date.
Why?
Spring break.
Huh?
Spring break. I'll be at the beach.
Yeah, right. You got the five...
I'm doing all my kids, making sad gossips.
What time do the kids leave?
No, they, they'll start spring break on the day before.
The Monday before?
The Friday before.
On the fourth?
The week before, the Fridays and Tims. So that would be spring break.
I'm not a spring breaker, so I...
You should try it someday.
If you guys wanna change it, that's fine with me, I mean, all of that is flexible for what, whatever you guys think. But you can get, you can get with me and give me a call to the office and see what they think about it.
I don't see the court.
A week after.
And I'm a city councilman.
Oh, one more thing, I'm having a problem.
I don't know.
The same problem we're talking here about conflicts. The screening committee is ready to meet, and I've had conflicts all of this week with, not me, but with different people. So all of a sudden, I was getting ready to send an email and say Monday. Now I find out Monday is a holiday, so it may have to be Tuesday.
What is it, the weekend, birthday, President's? President's, weekend's, tomorrow.
So it'll be, it'll be Tuesday.
I work still.
At 6:00, you're...
Or not.
Who's in the committee? You work at night?
Oh, yes, I'm all. No, they're not showing up for the committee.
No, no, they don't need to show up, but they said, I've sent them the dates that I wanted to do, and they said, well, I can go that day and that day, then another one said, well, I can't go that day and that day.
And we can't meet this week, I think we're gonna have to take different action on this.
They've all been cheering and stuff.
You know, like, if they can't meet this week, then I think we're gonna have to go a different route.
Who's like, this week? Why?
Because we need to, we need to get the interviews.
Well, I know, but one week is not gonna kill you, I mean, the way we need a committee to tell us what to do. You guys, you guys voted on that for me, you should. They're not gonna select it for you, you're gonna end up selecting it, but they're gonna screen, they're gonna screen it for you so that they can give you a recommendation of the ones that they...
Why do we need a committee to screen it?
We can't be on CM.
Do you agree?
That was a proposal, that was a proposal that I put before them, and...
You just got him in.
Make a motion, we'll do away with it.
It's not a legitimate...
I mean, to me, it won't look good in the committee, but if you wanna do just something in the committee anyway, it must be...
They're not showing up.
We just got, we just got finished getting all the, all the applications on the 15th, or the last day we got the applications, so it's not like...
And we have a good chunk of applications.
Yeah, we got 18 or so applications.
And there's some that are really good, but I just wanna know how old they are.
Well, if you, if...
The graduate is 72, from college.
We don't pay for the committee.
Okay. Okay. Pay the bills, anybody? Do we have bills?
Yeah.
Which one?
Animal golf carts.
Oh, there's this animal golf carts?
Those are the golf carts who repair for the...
So we do have some golf carts that work, right? Are those the two that are working?
No, no, I think we...
Uh, I disagreed in kind of, you know, you passed it, so we, we had to carry out what you wanted to do. Uh, I got them to sign the papers for the waivers and the things that, that, um, the city manager, the city attorney had said. So, we finally went out there and took the bulldozer and cleaned those. What I wanted to do is for you to know what it costs us. Um, the one that I put in your binder there was three thousand nine, three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Four thousand dollars for the Madam Now property, and the Trevino property costs twenty-seven ninety-seven. So, we, we paid, uh, close to six thousand dollars there for cleaning.
For the record, I was against that.
But they were willing to pay back, weren't they?
No.
Not, not on that. And I thought that we, we should have at least filed a lien. We should have filed a lien on the property.
Yeah, the city waived all that.
Yeah, you got no car, no lien.
That's not, that's not worse than the street, so let's go on.
Yeah. That's all I have now. Oh, oh, uh, before you, before you, uh, you might have noticed that I put it in the agenda, but you saw that I gave you some, uh, things on the, uh, Law and Sportsman Center. You know, just, uh, an idea about the plaque that they're gonna put there, and, and when they, they're planning to have the dedication for the,
The dedication will be March fourteenth?
Uh, I think I got it fourteen, right? Yes, it's on the Friday. And, um, you know, I'm working with the chief to try to, to develop some kind of a new dedication.
Oh, we have to change that date.
Why?
Spring break.
Huh?
Spring break. I'll be at the beach.
Yeah, right. What time will the kids leave?
No, they, they're, they'll start spring break on the day before.
The Monday before?
The Friday before.
On the, on the fourth?
The week before, the, the Fridays, it's him. So, that will be spring break, um,
I'm not a spring breaker, so I just...
You should try it.
If you, if you guys wanna change it, uh, that's fine with me. I mean, all of that is flexible, for what, whatever you guys think. But you can give, you can get with me and give me a call to the office, and, and see what you think about it.
Animal City Golf Clubs?
I'm, oh, one more thing, I'm having a problem.
I don't know.
The same problem we're talking here about conflicts. Um, the, uh, the screening committee is ready to meet. Uh, and I had a conflict all of this week with, not me, but with different people. So, all of a sudden, I was getting ready to send an e- uh, uh, an email and say, Monday. Now I find out Monday's a holiday, so it may have to be Tuesday.
What, is the Lincoln birthday, President? President's, President's, Lincoln's birthday tomorrow.
So, it'll be, it'll be Tuesday, uh,
I work still.
At six o'clock, you're gonna?
Or not.
Who's in the committee? You, you work at night?
Oh, yes, I'm on.
Well, they're not showing up, so it could be...
Well, I want to do, I wanna make sure that...
They, they need to show up, but, uh, they said, I've sent them the dates that I wanted to do, and they said, well, I can go that day and that day, and then another one said, well, I can't go that day and that day.
And we can't meet this week. I think we're gonna have to take different action on this.
They've all cheered themselves.
You know, like, if they can't meet this week, then I think we're gonna have to go a different route.
Who's like this week? Why?
Because we need to, we need to get the interviews.
Well, I know, but one week is not gonna kill you. I mean, I'm not even, the way we need a committee to tell us what to do. You guys, you guys, uh, voted, voted on that, I'm making sure. They're not gonna select it for you, you're gonna end up selecting it. But, but, uh, they're gonna screen, they're gonna screen it for you, so that they can give you a recommendation of the ones that they...
Why do we need a committee to screen it?
Do you agree?
That was a proposal, that was a proposal that I put before them, and, uh,
You just got it.
Make a motion, we do, do away with it.
I mean, uh, to me, it won't look good in the committee, but if you wanna do this, it's up to you.
It's in the meeting anyway, it's about the meeting.
We just got, we just got finished getting all the, all the applications, uh, on the fifteenth, was the last day we got the application. So, it's not like, you know...
And we have a good chunk of applications.
Yeah, we got eighteen, eighteen or so applications.
And there's some that are really good, that I just wanna know how old they are.
Well, if you, if, uh, if you...
The graduate of seventy-two from college. Okay. Okay, um, Pay the bill, anybody have, do we have bills?
Yeah.
Which one?
Animal golf carts.
Oh, there's this animal golf carts?
Those are the golf carts who were repaired for the first correct.
So, we do have some golf carts that work, right? Are those the two that are working?
No, no, I think we...
Okay, but they said there was two working golf carts, golf carts. So, those are the two that are working. Okay, we got repaired on?
Yeah, but I think... No, we got some, but I think they wanted to...
What about the Alamo, uh, distribution, the tires? Are they tires? No, the American tire. It's a long tire.
We're buying tire of all parts.
We have one for nine hundred, four hundred, six hundred, eleven hundred, all those tires? Three hundred, four hundred, three thirty-nine, four forty, two ninety-nine, four oh five.
They probably have a different size.
I didn't know we owned that many vehicles.
Who's they buying them from? Oh, we got a lot of vehicles.
That one are working?
The tire that are scratched.
Huh?
Yeah, they should see the tires that's, that are scratched.
We use a lot of tires. The, the police department is constantly on the road. I mean, you know, day and night.
So, are these for the police?
One set of tires for one unit, one of the old units. They were there about...
Set two, four, two sets? A set's two.
One hundred tires, which you pay, which we give a day work, control cars. Right, Roy?
Two sets.
Who do we buy them from?
American tire.
The dealers on the next day.
We have a wholesale price.
Maybe we should buy them from the local distributors and, uh,
I thought we were supposed to give them locally.
From Roy.
You would have to subsume from these bills. We do? But we have several different tire shops, too.
They have, they have...
Okay, it's a total of four thousand three hundred.
Make them look for the cheapest tire.
It's actually four thousand four hundred, so that's all in tires, a month? Okay, backhoe, police car.
They all have a PO? Yes, we don't do anything without PO.
Is that the one that we have budgeted?
We're also gonna pay the county this month. It's not on there, because we need to make a PO, but, uh,
See, well, that could be, why do we, we didn't pay the hundred and eighty on one? Because we, did you agree here that you're gonna pay them in cash?
I thought that was a good idea, but we're trying to find a pickup, so we're gonna pay, we're gonna pay half of it, which is eighty-eight thousand two hundred. We're gonna pay it tomorrow. That'll pay six months' worth, which would be through next month. Actually, they were billing us by the month. It's, it's in your packet.
I thought the council had voted to pay it at long term.
Yeah, it was in full.
Yeah.
We wanted it to be paid in full.
I don't think it was.
No, I, I don't think it was approved that way.
You approved it, but not, um,
No.
We could probably still do it, but, uh, I think it's wiser to pay half of it. They were billing us by the month. They weren't billing us the whole thing. If you look at your packet.
It was, I remember that. It was the last time.
Who's that for?
This is for the, the ambulance service. The total is a hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred. So, what I proposed, and tomorrow, we'll pay half of it. And actually, they were billing us by the month. I don't know if, uh, did they ever, uh, did they ever?
I don't know if they really agreed.
I don't think they did, they ever did, but...
They agreed, have they agreed?
Have they paid?
You would know that better than I would.
Billy residence?
Yeah, no, I don't know. But if you say they, they bill us by the month.
Well, I, I, I think, I, uh, I think we ought to look at the minutes, and if the minutes say, uh, to pay it off, we'll just pay it off.
Yeah.
We care.
I mean, it's not, it's not a wise move for cash flow purposes, but that's what you passed, that's what we're gonna pay.
The council agreed to amend the budget and have the money that was there, and you moved it from...
Well, the money is appropriated, but...
But we don't, but our money doesn't come in that way.
But we're paying for services that we haven't gotten yet.
Yes.
We're gonna pay six months of services that we haven't gotten yet.
I'm, I'm just saying, with the council voting.
Yeah, I don't think so.
And all I said, it wasn't very wise to pay up in advance, where they haven't given you service, and then the cash flow issue, so...
But this is the ambulance, right?
If you guys wanna do it that way, we'll look at the minutes.
Yeah, listen to the minutes.
This is the ambulance, right?
What is we, did we ever do anything on that lady that hit a power, a light in the west, something like that? There's Gavitas.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. The, uh, the usual procedure is that, is we refer them to our insurance, and they usually say...
Yeah, he, uh, sent it to T M L, and I saw the letter, and it got denied.
They get denied?
They, they, we're taking, we're always taking...
The county did the same thing a long time ago, because they were, everybody was filing for windshield damage, and, right? Backhoes are, uh...
One more, one more, one, um, Pepe, I mean, uh, Felipe, Felipe, no, Felipe lives. The house next door is a, a old lady. Well, I know we tried to clean up, and she runs out of there, but what can we do? To get that, they, we'll show you the water, no water?
They don't have no water?
Yeah, no, nothing.
Right. And we've tried to issue eviction, we've done, uh, just about everything with that lady, and, um, and keep that trapped for us, for our people.
Can we not do the public human resources, maybe they can do something?
I think you can go under, like, a order, because she's like...
I, I, I think that, um, that, uh, either Human Resources, or, uh, somebody's gotta, uh, evaluate her in terms of mental capacity.
Yeah, the adult services, I guess.
If not, then they can, uh, go ahead and refer to a...
What she's doing, she goes across the street and gives the neighbors water at night.
Right.
No, not the lady.
I get his call.
She's many years old.
I've seen my police out there, and I've seen my, my...
You saw ACOG, they have a agency, they have their facility that has a station there.
So, she doesn't have the water?
Right.
She only has no services whatsoever.
No services, and she's waiting there?
No water, no light, no...
And she got traps where anybody goes in there.
Yes, she got traps.
When I went on there, that thing popped up, but I was speeding car.
The city worker, still the yard, he would do the good job, and she well him up.
Right. She can't, she can't help it, because it's illegal.
She does?
She can't have booby trap there, that's illegal.
Nobody can have a booby trap.
They got booby trap right in, and, uh, and she put legal out.
We'll try, we'll try, and, and see what you know.
The first house, he says that that first house is a church, that, and it was a church.
It was?
Yes, it was.
Now, the second house in that property, she has two houses, a church and her house on that street.
And three old cars.
And three old cars, and chickens, and dogs.
But she came out, but I yelled, "Ma'am, ma'am," and she let me go in her yard. Maybe I should go.
We have to have an agency, and maybe, uh, James is right, we ought to talk. Hey, Cog, you see if we can get a...
I'm trying. I'll make a motion, we are...
Respect your mayor. You obviously respect your elders. Okay, motion to Haysville by Roy, Mayor Fulton, second by Congress Ossosko. All in favor? All against. Motion passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Mayor Fulton, meaning adjourn at eight.